I'd like to remind everyone to put their cell phone either on vibrate or turn it off. Appreciate it. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the call is on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the help, able to be here. Thank you for this beautiful weather you've given us, for your protection. We ask your wisdom today on these men as they make decisions, important decisions that will affect everyone in this city. Continue to be with this administration. God, you know what this city's needs are and we just pray that you'll meet them and we'll give you the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting on April 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April 8th into 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I have two today. Is Mr. Horace Jones here? Anybody else with you coming up, please? Whereas, one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. Approximately 26,214 Americans and 392 Alabamians received a life-saving, life-enhancing organ transplant in 2010. A new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 18 minutes. More than 110,000 men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantations, of which approximately 3,500 reside in Alabama. 243 Alabamians died in 2010, waiting for an organ transplant, which did not come in time. The Alabama Organ Center is a nonprofit, independent organ recovery organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation and therapy. Alabama supports the organ center's life-saving missions. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman-Gatton, the mayor of the city of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim April 2011 is Donate Life Month in Gadsden, Alabama, and we honor all who have given the gift of life. We focus our efforts on extreme need for organ and tissue donors, and we encourage residents to designate their donation decisions and share their decision to donate with family members.
First of all, I want to say that it's an honor to be here and stand before y'all. Organ donation is the most gift that you could give anyone, whether you're going through a bad time with a family member, of losing a family member. It gives you great satisfaction and peace, knowing that because of the organ donation that you were able to help save another life. Thank you so much.
I have another one here for Students Against Destructive Decisions, SADD. Any of y'all like to come up, too? Whereas, the city of Gadsden recognizes the importance of parents talking with their teens about alcohol. High school students who use alcohol or other substances are five times more likely to drop out of school or believe good grades are not important. Teen alcohol use kills about 6,000 people a year, more than all other illegal drugs combined. The majority of kids say their parents are the primary influence when it comes to decisions about drinking alcohol. Power Talk 21 Day is established on April 21st, 2011, to encourage parents and caregivers to embrace their important role in influencing America's youth in their decisions about drinking alcohol. To equip parents to talk with their teens about alcohol, MADD, Alabama on April 21st, 2011, will offer a free community parent workshop to give parents the tools in a parent handbook to effectively talk to their teens about alcohol. These local parent workshops are replicated across the country and will offer parents a research-based parent handbook to help them talk to their teens about alcohol and encourage adults to consider creating a safer community by becoming involved in reducing underage drinking. I urge all citizens to join in the local and national efforts to raise awareness of the importance of parents and teens talking together about alcohol in order to reduce the risk and dangers posed to teens and communities. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman-Gatton, the mayor of the city of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 21st, to be the first annual Power 21 Day in the city of Gadsden, Alabama.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Laquion Raglin. I'm a 2009 graduate of Gadsden City High School. I am now pursuing a major in psychology at Jacksonville State University. I have been here at City Hall for numerous occasions throughout grad school, and as one of Gadsden's own, I would just like to say that what you have done, what you're doing, what you're planning to do, has, is, and still making a difference. With all the bad publicity that our youth have received throughout the couple of weeks in Gadsden, there's a substantial amount of good that comes from it. And I just would like to thank you for being vessels, as well as voices for our community. Power Talk 21 is basically a national day to bring about the awareness of alcohol among teens and their parents. And I would just like to remind y'all that that is April 21st, this Thursday, at 6:00 at Crosspoint Community Church, and it lasts about an hour. But I would just like to thank you again. Thank you.
I just want to, I was going to do it under my, under council remarks, but I didn't realize, Mayor, that we were doing a proclamation on organ donations. As you know, I lost my niece over the weekend, and with the young people here, I mean, everything has fallen into place with the violence and what have you, and she was an organ donor. As a result of her death, there are four people now who are alive, and organ donations is important. Just wanted people to know that.
A is an ordinance assaying to de-annexation of 1734 Rainbow Drive. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. SAI Group LLC owner of Shell Station has requested de-annexation of his property, which is annexed by ordinance number 084-5. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, this was a mistake that was made back in, I guess it was 2005, when we tried to bring all these people into the city. Most of them opted out, and this man thought he had, and then he sold the business to somebody who hadn't been collecting taxes. And I personally think the only fair thing to do is to let him out because of a station across the street, and he would not be on the level playing field with him. One across the street's out in the county, and he doesn't have to pay the taxes. If he had to, it would put him in a bad financial situation. Anyway, is there any other discussion?
He had an opportunity to do, to de-annex when the, back when the rest of them did, and the reason he came in the first place was because of the water situation. The water department came up with the idea that if you weren't in the city, you couldn't have city water, and found out later on, and a lot of them came in the city assuming that that's the only way they get city water. Turned out that that was not the case, and the water department said, okay, anybody that came in under those circumstances can opt out if they want to. And these people thought they had opted out, and it was just some paperwork and mistake, I understand. So that's the reason I support letting him out of the city, which is contrary to most of my thoughts about de-annexation.
I don't think any of us want to de-annex anybody. We want people to come into the city and not out, not out of the city. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I think it's important to note also that the city's revenue department did a great deal of research before presenting this to the council to ensure, you know, both the statutory, policy-related, and fairness items related to this. So again, this has been looked at thoroughly.
You know, I understand the dilemma that the business is in, but we got a lot of other businesses in the same dilemma. They can't compete with the businesses in the county. I can only remember one occasion, there was a young child who couldn't get certain services that live right on the line. He couldn't get those services while he was in the city of Gadsden. And in order for him to receive those services, because it was a medical situation, we de-annexed their house over into, I think it was Glencoe, I believe it was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You know, I guess my better judgment, I voted for it at that time, but I realize it was a medical emergency as opposed to just a business decision. I just think that we opened up a can of worms when we do this, but of course, I understand the dilemma. I hate it that the gentleman bought the business in good faith and thought he was in the county. Again, I just don't think we need to be in the business of de-annexing property from the city.
Well, from the same thing, there was 20 others that did get de-annexed at the time, and this guy thought he was one of them. So, anyway.
I wasn't here then, and I would have spoke against it then. Once they're here, they ought to be here.
Well, you should have kept all them others in, no matter what the Attorney General said.
Well, you know, Mr. President, I think our general consensus here is that we don't, we don't want to de-annex any property. We truly don't want to. That's not our purpose of being here. But also, our purpose of being here is also to make sure that equality and everything is done right, and when we find out that a right has been, a wrong has been perpetrated, you know, whether whoever's fault it was, it's our obligation to try to correct that a wrong that was done, even though it's something that we don't want to do. We feel like a mistake was made, and we want to correct it.
Open the question.
I want to say one thing. I would, I can't let Billy get away with this. I think that lawyers from now on are going to be a little more diligent when they come upon a sale and checking to see whether it's in the city limits or not, because I would have thought that they'd be able to pick up on that before they consummated that sale.
That's true. Very true.
I can use that later on, is the only reason I want to inject it.
I just want to say that we have provided police protection. We heard upstairs, back in September, we provided police protection to that business down there.
I don't know.
We had never, we had never provided police protection.
Well, that's why our determinant factor, one of them, was that they hadn't ever done that.
Sheriff responded to that call down there.
I know they have before, but I was thinking to see, Gadsden Roy, can you lighten and enlighten us on that? Does that Shell Station ever have police protection?
As far as I'm aware, it has.
They've always had.
We were told upstairs that they did not respond to that location.
I know, Sheriff's been there.
Well, they can have it today. From now on.
Call for the question.
Okay, question's been called for. I would please take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1337 Council Avenue in District 3. The last known owners are State of Alabama Revenue Department, Kim F. Parker, Mid-Ohio Securities Corporation, for the benefit of Robert D. Gettis IRA. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started our case in July of last year. There've been no improvements nor permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I apologize, I didn't get a chance to go this weekend and look at them, Brian, but I recognize what it is now, so.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10, this public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1339 Council Avenue in District 3. The last known owner is the State of Alabama Revenue Department in Virginia Barfield. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this nuisance is actually next door to the property you just passed. We also started our case in July of last year. There've been no improvements nor permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There's a bunch of neighbors who are in favor of that. Thank you, Brian, I won't be getting those calls anymore.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution ordering a warning bid number 3167 for.
You skipped one. Number 11.
Yeah, number 11, okay. So final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 819 North 33rd in District 7. The last known owners are the State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Marion Hunter and Osborn Transportation. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2009. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
You going to get that car also, Brian?
I just said, no, I'm going to get the car.
You know.
I can have the car, okay, good.
Four flat tires.
Yeah. Take what you can get nowadays.
It's in my district, I'll take care of it.
Chair.
You're outranging me, okay.
Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3167 for guardrails. The NEAPA coordinators recommended awarding the bid to the Alabama Guardrail Incorporated, and the amount is $10,537.31. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution authorizing public safety radio interoperability memorandum of understanding. That's what unanimous consent is considered.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a resolution in support to go to state for a grant connecting various counties around us in North Alabama. I'm not going to get into all the megahertz and mega cycles and all that, because I don't even understand them. But this is an eight million dollar grant, and we just looking fire apart.
Any other discussion?
I'm just going to say how much was the amount, but I know there's eight millions left total.
Total, I'm just asking to go by.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today a resolution authorizing agreement with Five Children Inc. for development of two loft apartments at 538 Broad Street in accordance with our residential development assistance policy.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this, you know, again, this is in line with our residential development assistance policy, where we try to encourage developers to come into the city and develop loft apartments and offer new residential opportunities in the city. So this is definitely a positive. If I understand the location correctly, this is across the street from the current Jeffersons location downtown.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, see, this is what we need to be doing, bringing folk in, instead of sending folks out, particularly when you've got a revenue stream. I mean, we're looking at monies and monies, and then we let a business go someplace else. But anyway, I'm off my soapbox.
We righted a wrong.
I'm off my soapbox. I didn't say you were wrong, I'm just telling you what you done.
I said we righted a wrong.
Well, I'm just reminding you what you done, still. Whether it was a right or a wrong, you sending money out of the city.
That has nothing to do with this motion.
I just want to let you know that. I'm going to keep reminding you, you know, I'm a conscience. I know people don't like their conscience, but anyway, call for the question.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committee, boards, are there any? Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, we'll start with you, let us go down the line.
All right, thanks. I would just like to say on the inner out there, we're going to keep going so good around here, they're going to be lined up to come in the city. So let's just keep working like we've been working, and the public, too, keep getting involved in all the things we've got going. They're going to be wanting to come in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, we're working on Parks and Recreation and the mayor to get some extended hours for some of our recreation centers. I've been asked to identify the ones that we want to work with, to see about extended hours for the kids to be there later in the evenings and on Saturdays. And we're working on a program to do that, but I'm going to appeal to the citizens of Gadsden. Once this is done, once we have identified those recreational centers that are going to be open, please participate, please have your kids, please, please turn out for those recreational centers and have some planned activities for our kids. If we're going to do it, then we're going to man them with people from Parks and Recreation, and we need to respond and be there so that we're not wasting your resources. Work with us, but you'll hear more of that, and those places will be identified at a later date. And the only other thing that I have is I'm going to promote an event that's going to happen on May 28th at Antioch CME Church over on, at 2020 East Broad Street. Everybody and his brother thinks they can barbecue, so, you know, we just had Smoke on the Falls, and everybody can brag about how well they can barbecue. Well, they're going to have what they're going to call Athens Burnoff, and they're going to have, there's an entry fee, and they're going to do it on May the 28th, that's a Saturday during the Memorial Day weekend. And you can call Patricia Deramus R., her husband, at 256-492-1733. Now, there also are plans, if this promotion is well-received and well-attended, they want to take this citywide next year and take up one of our parks and have another local. This will be strictly for just local guys to brag about, you know, how well they can barbecue and how well. But stay tuned for that, but look forward to being over there, and it's going to be at Antioch, that's right across the street from Chris Wood Cemetery, and they're going to take up part of the park, I mean, we're part of the front of the cemetery there to do their event, so look forward to that, and that's in District 1, by the way. Thank you.
Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things from me today. I would like to share with, in particular, the young folks that are here today, but everybody in general. I got a chance to sit in the mayor's chair this morning for the first time, and I can tell you that after about five seconds of being in that chair, it gets pretty hot after a while, so. So anybody that's aspiring to be mayor, just understand that that comes along with Next week, April, the week of April 25th through April 30th is National Community Development Week. So I was asked by the city planner to remind folks of that activity. Essentially, this week-long celebration is designed to emphasize the importance, both locally and nationally, of community development and what it does for our communities. You know, the city of Gadsden gets about a little bit over a million dollars in terms of its community development block grant, and that money is utilized as seed money for a lot of the economic and community development activities that happen here. So for those, and you've heard us talk about it here in the last few weeks, that CDBG is under attack, along with a lot of other domestic spending programs. So what happens is when that federal money dries up or falls off to some degree, those requirements, those requests, a lot of those public service agencies now have to look to the city to make up the difference. And of course, it becomes, it becomes an opportunity for the city, but also a financial strain on the city as well. So again, this is, next week's going to be, we'll be recognizing this event to promote and remind people of what goes on and what happens with our CDBG grant and what community development does for our community. Make sure that after you have educated yourself about what CDBG does in your community, you'd be surprised at some of the projects that have been propagated in your area. Make sure you reach out to your local, your local legislative delegation and, of course, your federal representatives to remind them to protect CDBG, because cities need CDBG. The Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity will be hosting, will be putting on a program this weekend, actually on Friday, the 22nd of April, the Bootillion Event. They've not had this event, I don't think, since the 80s. So this event is designed to promote and introduce young males to the community and to promote a lot of positive things. And again, it's going to be on Friday, the 22nd, at Convention Hall, so we ask that you would please go out and support that program. And they also have a, utilize this event to raise funds for a scholarship that they offer up to graduating seniors. The last thing I have is, you know, it's, the summer's upon us. We sat here a couple weeks ago and listened to a couple groups present issues relative to. We sat here a couple weeks ago and listened to a couple groups present issues relative to youth concerns. We just had two very horrific incidents to occur in the city of Gaston regarding youth. So, a lot of concern about youth and young people. So, one of the things that I talked to the mayor about this morning, I've been coordinating some, to some degree, with Parks and Rec. Really haven't formulated what it's gonna mean, but I would like to promote at some level a youth summit for us to have this year. I do plan to, I do plan to support it financially where I'm legally able to, and I'll support it with sweat equity and whatever else we need to make sure that we conduct a summit this year. And again, we haven't really figured out what that's gonna look like. But the big thing is, I want to make sure that that youth summit or any other program or event that we come up with is not gonna fix our problems. That's just kind of a means to an end. Let me give you the three areas where we can address our youth issue. Parents, parents, parents. One thing you don't have to worry about with my young people that live in my house is you don't have to worry about them killing anybody. One thing you don't have to worry about with my young people is you don't have to worry about them stealing anything. That starts at home. That starts at home. And, you know, and it turns my stomach to some degree to hear parents attack the schools, attack the cities, and to attack programs because their children are failing. We've got to start where it starts, and that's at home with parents. So, again, I am promoting this youth event that we hope to have and be able to promote and put on this summer. But I am strongly encouraging parents to get more involved with their children, and we won't have to look at events like happened the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Dever, you were right on time. You know, we've been sitting here, and I've been sitting here preaching for the last several weeks about the youth violence. And then my family became victims of youth violence this weekend, with my niece being killed, nineteen years old, young. You know, I don't know what we can do. I just know we gotta do something. I've been saying that and continue to say that. But again, like I said earlier, I wasn't aware that we were gonna be recognizing donors. And that's another thing that we need to consider as individuals. You know, when you have a tragedy, when you have a tragedy in your family, you can make something good out of it by donating some of those vital organs that somebody else can use, that you can save somebody else's life. So, please, ma'am, and please, sir, consider that. When you have a, someone of your loved one going on, you can leave part of them back here and help someone else. And that's what we're supposed to be doing, is taking care of our brothers and our sisters. So, again, like I say, we did have that tragedy, but something good came out of it. There were four lives affected and saved as a result of her death. On a brighter note, all of our young people are not bad. I mean, I would just hand it this, out of all the tragedies that we've had in our family this week, we had something good to happen. I think it's in today's paper, was it, that you gave me this? Yeah. It had to be, because this happened yesterday. It says, "A pair of Gaston City Girls basketball players signed scholarships on Monday to take their games to a new level." Point guard Brittany Higgins signed with Huntington College in Montgomery. And my granddaughter, Jana Rollins, signed with Middle Georgia College in Cochrane, Georgia. So, our young folks are doing good, and we need to recognize them too. That's all I have.
I just want to like to wish everyone, you know, this is the time of families gathering and to worship and celebrate. It's a very special time in a Christian's life. So, we just want to wish everybody a very happy and prayerful Easter.
I would like to invite and remind everyone that Easter Sunday at Alabama City Gazebo, we will be having Easter sunrise service. I think there's eight or ten churches that are gonna be involved in the area. It starts at seven o'clock Easter morning. We'll have some bleachers set up out there, so they plenty chairs for people. So, we hope you just come and have a celebration with us Easter Sunday. That's all I have.
Dever, I do appreciate your words this morning. It was really good. Point well taken. This, I do want to thank Public Works Today, Brian Stovall, Mike Hilton, and his crew, who did a great job up at Tuckahoe Heights out front, facade and rock and this sort of thing. They came through, and we really appreciate that. Really, Billy, we appreciate that.
I got that. I logged that down.
You're writing that down, I know. But on another note, from the Gaston Edgewall Patriots Association, I want to thank everyone of y'all, because I know y'all went with us on our golf thing and what's going on there to furnish the veterans, the World War II veterans of Washington trip and all the different things. So, we appreciate y'all. On another note, and I want to talk to the people, my people, Tuckahoe Heights, on the mountain on the scenic highway, to the residents. And I want to talk about Mountain View Hospital. Specifically, I want to talk about security or lack of it. There is no real security at that hospital. Number one, in my mind, are the patients who are up there without any security. Number two are the employees who are up there twenty-four hours a day with the patients, with no security, especially at night. And then I want to talk about the residents who live around that hospital and in that area. I think they're getting a little bit tired of escapees under their cars. They're getting a little bit tired of them in their carports and their basements. They're in fear, and I don't think, in my position, that I should have to put up with my people being in fear, living in their old house, their own house. So, I'm gonna push this just a little bit. About five or six years ago, we investigated this from a local situation and found that they don't have to have security at that hospital. That came from the Board of Hospitals, whatever you call it. However, I did find out that the other two hospitals here do have security, and they don't have near the problems that I'm gonna tell you about on this hospital. These are allegations that are based on records of the Gaston Police Department and Fire Department, based on calls to that hospital. Now, we're gonna talk about assaults, thefts, rape, beatings, escape, and so on. Many, many, many. I had one case where a man called me about seven o'clock one night, and he said, "You know, I've been involved in three escapees from that hospital, and he said, 'I'm tired of it, what I do.'" And I said, "Well, call the police. They'll come up and take care of it." He said, "Well, I'm not saying that. I got a man down on the ground with my pistol to his head right now, and I want to know what to do with him." I wanted to tell him what to do, but I didn't. Anyway, when a citizen has to go that far to protect his property, we got a problem. That's just one case. I've got here fifty-seven calls in the last year or so made by our Fire Department and Rescue and EMS. Folks, every time one of those ambulances goes out, a rescue goes out, a fire truck has to go out with it. And we're talking about fifty-seven calls. I've got substantiated files here on all the things that I talked about right here. And if I said a hundred calls in the last year, that wouldn't be enough. You can see how many there are. It's ridiculous. It's too many for me to count, okay? I think our police and our Fire Department are furnishing security up there. And it's costing us. It's tying up our police force. It's tying up our Fire Department, plus the fire trucks that have to go out with them. And I just don't think it's the city of Gaston's responsibility to furnish security up there any more than anywhere else in this city. I've thought a whole lot about the problems up there. I get a little bit emotional. The other night on TV, I got a little bit mad, which is fine. But here's what I think I'm gonna ask to do. I'm gonna ask the chief of police through Captain Harbin to notify DHR, Medicaid, the State Hospital Board, and the Alabama Bureau of Investigation to come up here and do an extensive investigation of that hospital, what's going on internally and what's going on externally. I've just come to the point where allegations and allegations and allegations. But again, when it comes to the safety of my people up there, there ain't no telling how far I'll go. And this is the first step. That's all I have.
Year to Good Friday holiday this week. Thursday's run, that will be collected in the winter. And Friday's run will be collected on Thursday. I'm gonna let you know. That's pickup. The other two days, Monday and Tuesday, will be a regular pickup. I retain a motion we adjourn.
You don't have any comments?
Yeah, I don't have any. Y'all covered it very well.
Some move.